Holding a closed session concurrently. We will be conducting this evening's meeting in a virtual setting. Council members, hold please. Sorry about that. Council members and staff have participated from remote locations and the deputy city clerk Mona Schilling is in chamber to accommodate public communication. Thank you Mona. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live this evening on Spectrum Channel 3 and 22, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and El Segundo TV at YouTube dot com. Please remember to mute your mic when not speaking and council members if making a motion or a second, please do so using your last name in order for the clerk to hear and report correctly. And then we'll get started. So I just want to say also, this is a strange yet very special evening. Doing this council meeting, the first one like this of its kind, really virtually. And it's a really, we're honoring a tradition going back to 1917 where we swear in new members of the council. We also have our new city treasurer, Matt Robinson. So we welcome Lance Jarrow to council. We're welcoming back Carol Purstuck and myself. And this goes back to 1917 as I mentioned, as well as the tradition of electing the mayor and the mayor pro tem, which is somewhat of a unique set of procedures and that is really kind of a story tradition for us. So I just want to honor that and thank everyone for being on tonight. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Nichol.
Here.
Councilmember Pimental.
Here.
Mayor Protem Purstuck.
Here.
Mayor Boils.
Here.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is anyone in chamber wishing to speak?
We have no public communication.
Thank you. Have you received any public comments?
I have. I have a question for you. Did you want to do the pledge of allegiance on an invocation or are we skipping that?
Yes, please. Madam Clerk, Sarah is muted. Let's do both. We have council member Pimental leading the pledge, but first the invocation led by probably you, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's me tonight.
If you have a flag viewable from your office, please address it and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will do your invocation. We gather today, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's do roll call, please.
We did. You're good.
Yeah, we did. Sorry. Public communications.
Okay, so I am going to state the public communication in the order they were received. So first one up and some of these I do not have a name. They just have an email address, but they didn't sign them. So this first one is, is, is that way I don't have a name. So number one, any chance of convincing the county to open up ocean access from six to eight AM so the people who want to paddle, surf, or swim are not at the beach to socialize or gather can get a workout in. Joggers are allowed to jog, bikers find roads to bike, ocean swimmers should be allowed to swim. Surfers, paddlers, and ocean swimmers are not in close proximity of each other and are not posing a risk to spread the virus. They also don't hang out at the beach. They just use the beach to access the ocean. Comment number two, this is from Dave Atkinson and family. I believe it's time everybody in El Segundo should be required to wear face masks whenever they are outside their home's property. It looks like we're finally getting a leg up on the virus. We need everyone to work as one. Don't be selfish or think it can't affect you. It can affect everyone one way or another. Let's do this. Thanks. Dave Atkinson and family. Number two, good evening. My name is Tom McGuire. I, excuse me, number three. Good evening. My name is Tom McGuire. I live in El Segundo and I'm interested in municipal broadband. Has this been investigated previously and is it something that can be looked at for the future? Thanks for any information, Tom. Number four from a gentleman named Brian Simmons. My name is Brian Simmons. I am a resident. I would like to know why can't I purchase an overnight permit to park my big rig in town? Not too long ago, Smokey Hollow was a commercial vehicle parking area. I know because I used to park my big rig in town. Also, why is ESPD ticketing commercial vehicles if LAPD or the sheriffs aren't? Thank you for your help. And the final one for the evening, gardeners, question mark. The use of leaf blowers is not an essential, is not essential. This is the wrong one. And what bottom line is, she doesn't believe leaf blowers and gardeners are essential and she would like to stop the leaf blowers. Vaughn Buckles, special ed teacher and El Segundo resident. And that's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just, I want to comment on one that I was familiar with and I'll turn it over to the city manager. On item three, Tom McGuire, he did ask a similar question and started a thread on one of the Facebook groups. I responded to it and talked about, a little bit about the fiber ring program that we're doing with the support of COG or the first city that's going to be lighting up with that fiber ring. That's still, I think, in the works for this week from a construction standpoint. And I'm going to turn it over to Scott to, if he wants to address items one, two, four, five, and, and six. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff would be happy to follow up with these about why can't individuals swim in the ocean? And as, as we understand the county's order on that, that's not an option at this time, but we will follow up with that individual to help them understand what the order says. The third, the second speaker on face covering, so when the fire chief comes up later, when we talk about item seven, eight, nine, we'll cover many of these, these topics. The face coverings, this city will be complying with that. It goes into effect first thing on, on Thursday and our employees will be complying with that requirement. And again, the fire chief will talk more about that a little later in the agenda. Number four, the request about overnight permits for big rigs in town. We'll have staff follow up with that individual separately. Number five, the speaker about gardeners, the opinion that they're not essential orders and that they should be subject to the various orders during this emergency. We'll follow up with that individual as well. Didn't get speaker number six.
I think it was five. Yeah, I think it was five.
Okay, so again, council, we'll follow up accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up procedural motions, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances, resolutions on the agenda by title only stating your last name of a council member. Do I have a motion to read all ordinances and resolution by title only?
Nichol, so move.
Krista.
Thank you.
Pimentel, second.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please take a voice vote.
Councilmember Nichol.
Yes.
Councilmember Pimental.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Purstuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Boils.
Yes. Okay, next up we have reports from city clerk. Madam Clerk, please introduce the items under your name.
All right, so item number one, we adopt a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election held March 3rd, 2020. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Hensley, will you read the resolution by title only, please?
Yes, a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election held March 3rd, 2020 is ready for adoption.
So stating your last name.
First.
Purstuck, second?
Yes.
All right. I gotta roll, sorry guys, I got like, all right, councilmember Nichol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimental.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Purstuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Boils.
Yes.
Okay, pass, four oh. So this is, so item number two, administer the oath of office to council members elect, city clerk elect, and city treasurer elect. So Mona is going to give me the oath first and then from there I will turn around and administer the oath to the, to everybody else. Right.
So Madam Clerk, can you please stand and raise your right hand?
Oh, I have to stand? Sure.
And can you repeat the oath that you have in front of you?
I, Tracy Leibert, solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will will and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Top vote getter, top vote getter right there. This is Madam Clerk.
All right. All right, so first up will be Lance Jeru. So Lance, if you will, please raise your right hand and repeat the oath that you have. That would be fantastic.
Okay, I Lance Jeru do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. And do you have a few words you'd like to say?
Uh, yeah, you're gonna have to indulge me a little bit here on this one. I'm gonna, I promise I'll keep it to five minutes or less. So someone start the clock up right now if you could. Like it's been a two and a half year journey for me to begin on, to get on this dais and honestly, I've enjoyed that journey immensely. Except for the 2018 election night about two years ago, I didn't enjoy that quite as much as maybe Pimental and Nichol did. But in the end, I believe that everything happens for a reason. And the past two years have afforded me the opportunity to become significantly more educated in the city. Our challenges and our opportunities. I've had a lot of help along. Have to start with the guy that kind of put me on this path two and a half years ago. The late, great Nate Chidick was a force of personality, a man who was bigger than life and a man that I admired greatly. He stressed the importance of community involvement, community pride, and making the time to do the right things. He instilled in me the need for leaders to step up and take ownership of the responsibility that we have to the community. It saddens me greatly that he is not here to see this particular council, but I know he would be proud of the influence that he had. Now, two and a half years ago, I was quite literally a babe in the woods on this. I was fresh off being the president of Little League and the president of girls softball. I literally did not know anything. I barely knew who the council members' names were. I didn't know who the city departments were. Got, I had to look up the police and fire chiefs names. It was really, I was really out of my element. And in order to get up to speed, I really had to reach out to a lot of people that I didn't know and didn't know me. And it was really amazing that I had the amount of people that were willing to talk to me, to educate me and to help me. And there's a few in particular that I want to recognize and that is, you know, Sandy Jacobs, Carl Jacobson, Eric Bush, Dick Croxell, Ron Swanson, Dave Atkinson, and Ryan Baldi, you know, and there was countless others. Days upon days of meetings that people took with me simply to kind of help me along in that ride. Also in particular, I kind of want to point out the 2016 to 2018 sitting council. Two of you are up there right now, Drew and Carol. You were part of that group. You each gave me two or three meetings to kind of help me along the way. Also Suzanne Fuentes, Mike Dugan, and of course Don Brand. Your selfless nature and kindness you all showed me really meant a lot and I really appreciate that. I have to have a little thank you here for my family, especially my wife Gina, who continues to indulge my incessant need to take on challenges and projects that take me away from the family. To my son Luke and daughter Leah, who for the life of them can't figure out how the guy who acts like a child at home managed to become an elected leader of the city. I appreciate the love, the understanding, and the support you've all given to me. To those who supported me and worked on my two campaigns, second was a little bit more abbreviated, but nonetheless, you know who you are. I've talked to you before and I really appreciate everything you've done. Lastly, there's just one person that I have to recognize who has gone well above and beyond the call of friendship. I can't actually believe she still talks to me, to be honest with you. Esther Cleland, I asked you to help me through this process when neither of us knew anything about what the heck we were doing as campaign manager slash psychiatrist. And let's face it, about halfway through it was more psychiatry than campaign managing. But again, I didn't quite understand what I was asking of you at the time and I really appreciate everything that you did for me. And to the Cleveland family, thank you for letting me rob your, your mom for that period of time. I really appreciate that. You're a very special family and you are near and dear to my heart and I owe you all a very large debt of gratitude. So again, thank you very much and I look forward to doing the job that needs to be done over the next four years.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up, councilmember Purstuck. Go ahead, please raise your right hand and repeat the oath.
I Carol Purstuck do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will hear, oh, excuse me, I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take the obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
All right, congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
Yes. I just want to thank El Segundo for re-electing me to the city council. It's my honor to serve the council and be a member of this team. I'm really look forward to working with this team because I know this is going to be an amazing team to get us out of the COVID-19 shutdown. We are really poised for success and I'm just, you know, all members of the council are my friends and in, and, and my business partners. And I'm just really thankful that we have an amazing team set up, ready to get us out of this shutdown. For the next four years, I will be focusing on ensuring all citizens receive the services they need while maintaining the balanced budget they deserve. El Segundo is a very special place to me and I'm committed to ensuring that we as a city and a community continue to grow while keeping our small town charm. I also want to thank my family, my two daughters, Makyla and Isabel, and my husband, Michael. And they've been my rock and my support and without them I wouldn't be standing here today. So thank you and thank you to El Segundo for re-electing me to this position.
Mr. Boils, you are up next. Will you please raise your right hand and state the oath, please?
I Drew Boils do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. Sorry, I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any, any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. And I'll be brief, hopefully. I just wanted to say thank you. It's an honor. It's hard to believe four years have flown by. And I think that's because while we've had some significant challenges, I've had a lot of fun working with everyone on the staff and Carol and Don and Suzanne and Mike Dugan and Scott and Chris and now Lance and Tracy and Krista. It's been amazing. I want to thank the residents and businesses because it was kind of strange. It was a little bittersweet actually to not really have to run. And it's been a long time since El Segundo, I think the early 90s, had an uncontested election. And actually missed running a little bit because I got a charge out of it. I learned a ton like we all do when we run for office. But I know that my work wife, Heidi Weiss, greatly appreciates the time that she got back and I do as well. And my wife, right here, Lee, really appreciates that also. And I'll just wrap by saying that I'm very fortunate to have incredible support system of five children and my amazing wife who's been through many different things with me, ups and downs and trials and tribulations and you name it. And it's an absolute honor and pleasure to serve on the city council for the next four years. Thank you for your vote confidence.
Congratulations. All right, Matthew Robinson, you are up next. And Matthew is our new city treasurer. So Matthew, if you will, please raise your right hand and repeat the oath.
I Matthew A. Robinson do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, Matthew. Would you like to say anything?
Sure, just want to thank Krista for the last term and a half serving the city and, and the groundwork that she laid for hopefully the next four years for me and the, the help that she's been to me on the IAC organization. So I'm just hoping to pick up where she left off and work with you guys and serve the city to the best of my abilities.
Well, thank you and welcome. Welcome to the team.
Thanks.
I would like to remind all of you that did take the oath this evening that to please sign the, the oath and return it to the clerk's office when you have a moment.
And I just wanted to interject.
Oh, yeah, and Krista's up. So if you guys would like to speak to Krista, go ahead.
I just wanted to say congratulations, Matt. I'm so excited for you. It's been great working with you. You're super talented and I'm so glad the city has somebody like you running the treasury for the next four years and congratulations.
Councilmember Jeru, sorry, Lance, it'll take me a while. Would you like to say something to Krista?
She walked away. Hi Krista. Listen, I obviously I didn't get a chance to work with you much. Obviously beat on the dais for the last minute and a half. But as a resident, I did get to see a lot of your presentations and such in the chamber. And I have to say, I really appreciated the professionalism you showed during those. It's not easy subject matter for everyone to understand. And you did a great job of putting it in a context that people were easily to understand. So thank you very much and I wish you luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Nichol.
I just want to say congratulations on being unburdened by the pressure of all. And we cannot thank you enough for the things that you've done during your time in the Treasury Department, what you inherited and where it stands today. You've truly left your mark on the city of El Segundo. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Pimental.
Yeah, I think to echo that, that when you run for this office, you know, you really peer in and are trusted to learn kind of the history of where things are and where they've been and how they got from one to the other. And I think a real testament to the work you've done is that that picture is very clear now in a way that 15 years ago, I think we were all would have been sitting here trying to reverse engineer someone's individual work. And the fact that you have an enduring and a legacy that is a process that someone can step into in a proverbial, I got hit by a bus, what do I do now? Is a real testament to your professionalism and the fact that you've made so much time to make so much sense of this process that even I can follow it. So thank you very, very much and I congratulate you.
Carol.
Yes, thank you Krista. Thanks for being part of our team. Your leadership skills have really helped transform our treasury and really enabled us to be successful in our investment endeavors. We'll definitely miss your calm, concise explanation of how our, our, our investments are doing. I wish you all the best on your next endeavor and we will definitely miss you as part of our team.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Boils.
Well, I can honestly say that Krista is the reason that we are in good stead right now financially. I mean, many people played a part, including Joe Lilio, Gray Carbon Forum and others. But Krista is the reason that our investment portfolio is on solid footing right now. Her and her alone and the team that you have with you. But you just completely transformed that department at City Hall, Kristen. That doesn't go unnoticed. And I just am thankful that you are part, I know we're all thankful that you were part of the city through this time. And I also know that LAX, are you still there at LAX? You are, right?
Actually, I just got a promotion to be the chief deputy controller for the city of Los Angeles. So I.
Oh, my gosh. Well, you're gonna have your hands full. I was saying.
Oh my gosh, well, you're gonna have your hands full. I was saying with LAX, we're now ninety-five percent in traffic and revenue probably.
Yes.
So lucky to have you there as well. So congrats and they're lucky to have you. And when you're done retiring and I'm off city council, let's find a way to work together again, shall we?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Oh, and can I say one thing, Madam Clerk, to Matt? Matt, I'm just glad I don't have to see you on the soccer pitch. You might not remember, but that I was that really bad player in the co-ed league when you were on, uh, Richmond and El Segundo growing. So, good to see you in a suit, buddy. Gotta get you back out there.
Awesome. Would any, um, uh, Scott Mittnick, would you like to say anything or any department heads?
Okay, um, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Krista, on behalf of the executive team and city employees, just two words, well, four words, well done. And thank you. Great job. You will be missed a great deal.
Thank you very much. Um, and I wanted to thank the team because it's always done with a team. It's not just me up here. Um, I appreciate Mastino and Latanya and everybody and I wish you guys all well. And I'll be around. I still live.
Alright, anyone else?
So Krista, it's been extremely enjoyable to work with you, um, over the past four years I've been here. Uh, very professional, um, the professionalism you brought to, uh, this office i- is exceptional. Um, your art, your, your mark's gonna be here forever. And I'll make sure your, uh, legacy, uh, continues and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Alright, is that it? Alright, well, good luck Krista. We'll miss you.
Thank you Tracy. I'll miss you too. Take care.
Okay, we will move on to number three and bear with me, I have to read a few things. So, number three, election of mayor and mayor pro tem by seated council members. So first, before we start, I'll ask Mark, Mark, do you have anything you would like to say before we get started?
No, I'll answer questions as people have them, um, when you're through or during the process.
Okay. So I will explain the process to you all. So the city clerk serves as the chair for the nomination process for the position of mayor. One council member may nominate more than one person for the office. A council member can nominate themselves. After nominations have been closed, the voting for mayor will take place in the order nominations were received. Council members will be asked for a voice vote. As soon as one of the nominees receives a majority vote, vote, the clerk will declare that individual elected as mayor. A tie vote results in a failed nomination. If none of the nominees receive a majority vote, the clerk will call for nominations again and repeat the process until a single candidate receives a majority vote. If there is only one nominee for the position, the clerk will declare the nominee elected. Once the mayor has been elected, the city clerk will turn the meeting over to the mayor and nominations and election of the mayor pro tem will proceed in the same manner as the mayor's selection. So anybody have any questions before we start?
Uh, this is Mark. I just wanted to clarify because you cut out a little bit Tracy is that the nominations do not require a second. I think that a word got lost in there. So I just make that clear.
And so what I'm gonna do is I'm, I'm gonna go in, in the roll call order. That's the order we use for everything. So I will begin with our newest member, Mr. Jerro. And you will state either I nominate or I pass. You do not have to nominate someone. And just, let's just, um, I'll probably go a little slow because I have to write everything down at the same time. So just bear with me. So, um, anyway, so we'll begin with, um, councilmember Jerro.
Okay, um, I nominate Carol Purstuck. Uh, first of all, I want to be clear that this is in no way a reflection on the current mayor, Drew Boils. You've done an amazing job. You have single-handedly transformed the position of mayor in this town. From your intimate business knowledge, entire this work ethic to your embracing social media and the need to keep our residents informed in real time. You have literally set a new standard and a very high bar. Uh, honestly, I would hate to be the person who has to follow you. We are all elected leaders up here with equal say, um, and I really believe that anyone up here in time and with experience would also be a strong mayor. Um, this really is instead about a person who I feel is also a great leader with an incredible work ethic. And who has shown a selfless dedication to the city and its future. Uh, from her work with the Ed Foundation to serving on council for the past four years and the last two years as mayor pro tem. She has exhibited vast, uh, knowledge and also very strong leadership. Uh, being chosen by your peers as the mayor of El Segundo is a privilege. I believe Carol has more than earned that privilege and the opportunity to do a great job as mayor.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Nickel.
Pass.
Councilmember Pimentel.
I nominate Drew Boils for mayor. We punch above our body weight, uh, in the region and an area where our closest city is twice as big as us. Our biggest, some of our biggest neighbors are ten times as large as us. I think the consistency of message, uh, and the consistency of purpose that has led us to such tremendous growth in the last few years is a reflection of the consistency we had under Mayor Fuentes. And I think we'll consider, continue that, uh, with Mayor Boils. Thank you.
And, and for the, for the voting, you are all now council members. So I'm not being disrespectful when I don't say mayor pro tem Purstuck. It's actually now councilmember Purstuck. So how would you like to vote?
Pass.
Councilmember Boils.
I pass, thank you.
Alright, we need to do a voice vote. So I'm gonna start once again with, um, Lance. And the first person that's up is councilmember Carol Purstuck. So, Mr. Jerro, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Pimentel, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Purstuck, how do you vote?
Yes.
And councilmember Boils, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, so next up is, um, councilmember Boils. Councilmember Jerro, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Purstuck, how do you vote?
Yes.
And councilmember Boils, how do you vote?
I vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, so congratulations, councilmember Boils. You are now mayor Boils. And you can, um, go ahead and so, uh, help select the mayor pro tem.
Okay, so we're going through the same roll call. Alright, so for mayor pro tem, same process. We're gonna go first to councilmember Jerro and if you'd like to nominate or pass for mayor pro tem.
I nominate Chris Pimentel. Uh, I feel Chris has shown a vast working knowledge of government and its processes in his first two years on council. I appreciate his background in risk management. Uh, it's a skillset that is extremely valuable in any situation, but particularly in local government. Uh, where there's always fear of making, uh, a decision that has dire unintended cons- uh, consequences. Although, although I do think we should be provided a thesaurus for Chris's hundred dollar words. Um, I believe he would make a great mayor pro tem and, uh, eventually a great mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Jerro. Councilman Nickel.
Pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Pimentel.
Pass.
Councilwoman Purstuck.
I nominate myself.
Okay, and I will pass. Okay, so first heard was Councilman Pimentel. So we're gonna go back to Jerro with a yes or no?
Yes.
Councilman Nickel?
Yes.
Councilman Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Purstuck?
No.
And I am a yes. Okay, so it's four one on the mayor pro tem. Congratulations, mayor pro tem Pimentel. And thank you for the vote of confidence from my peers. I appreciate that. Okay, let's go to item. Bear with me a second here. Okay, uh, item under reports, councilmember Purstuck has an item which is item four, which is limit the time a council member may serve as mayor to one two-year term for each election cycle. And, uh, with a restriction to not serve two consecutive two-year terms as mayor. Uh, councilmember Purstuck. I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so I brought this because I want to have a discussion about it. Um, I believe in term limits in all aspects of government. For El Segundo as a council of five, we represent the community as a whole and our voices and are their voices. As a council of five, we are the leaders in the community and and have an equal vote and representation. In El Segundo, the position of mayor is a city to have a designated leader of leaders, but does not and should not give the mayor any additional power. By having a two-year term limit on the position of mayor, we'll ensure that all members of the council may have the opportunity, if so desired, to be that leader. With a term limit in place every two years, new energy will be brought to the position of mayor, bringing new items, ideas, fostered and unique connections that will reach the city and give additional insight to the council. Additionally, by having two, uh, two-year term limits, uh, apply, um, limits is applying due diligence and ensuring all voices in the community will have the represented, will be represented by the mayor. So basically, I just, I just feel that it's important that we and that we as, um, voices of the community have equal representation and a chance to be mayor if so desired. I just would like at this time to bring it up for open discussion. Anyone want to participate?
I'd ask council to raise their hand. There's a little raise hand. There should be, if you click on participants. Uh, right there, there should be a raise hand function or you could just go like this. I'm watching all of you. Scott, Councilman Nickel, did you want to say something? You're, you're unmuted, I think.
I am unmuted. Uh, Carol, thanks for putting this on the agenda. I appreciate it. Um, I guess there's part of me that does agree with you to a certain within a, within a realm of term limits. Do I think a senator should be in the senate of the United States for twenty years? No, I don't. Uh, a small town like ours, when you think about the concept that we just chose a leader amongst the leaders. The city votes us here to make these decisions. And this, and the residents of the city view us as their leaders. And then they ask us to choose a leader amongst us. If we set a policy in place that sets a limit on that, I, I believe that it it takes away that beautiful thing that we just did, which was essentially denote one of us as you are the leader amongst us leaders, lead us. And I just, I can't get behind a two-year, uh, term limit on mayor.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Nickel. Um, anyone else like to comment? Councilman Pimentel, you came off mute.
Uh, I would say thematically, I, I broadly support it. Uh, however, I think that, that in the spirit that we try not to hamstring future councils, I think we need to trust judgment of councils at the time of what the best fit for their mayor. And if there was a time in the future where a mayor, care, a councilperson had a specific skillset that that period of time required, uh, I would not want them to feel hamstrung by the administrative code to say they could not select that person based upon prior service. So, uh, I am wholeheartedly in favor of the spirit of this motion. Uh, I think we need to trust the confidence and courage of the conviction of councils though to pick the right person they think for that job at that time.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Well stated in terms of, uh, alright, thank you. No more on that. Mr. Jerro, Councilman Jerro, anything to comment on this one?
Uh, no, I mean, the, um, I, I would like to know if, if possible. I know that, that there are several cities that have a rotating mayor and I'm, I'm not suggesting that I think that should be the case. Um, but it would be interesting to see what, what does the surrounding, uh, areas that have a similar government, um, setup that we do? What does it look like? Um, what are the pros and cons, et cetera? But, um, you know, I, I'm not as, uh, I, I don't necessarily have an issue with, with deciding to change it every two years. Um, but I also understand, uh, the principle of what we just went through. Um, you know, Councilman Nickel just brought that up and, you know, it's, uh, it's part of the process. But it would be interesting to see what everybody else is doing, just to have a frame of reference, not saying I wish to be popular.
Thank you, sir. Alright, I'll, I'll comment. Um, last, actually in twenty sixteen, this was brought up. I might even brought this up at that point in time. I don't remember if it might have been Carol. Anyway, I did, back then in twenty sixteen, the same night we were squaring in, I presented a pro and con analysis of what I thought the difference between a rotating mayor is, the pros and cons versus our system. Which by the way, has been in place since nineteen seventeen. I have the clerk put this up. The longest consecutive mayor was only eight years. And I want to reiterate something that Council Nicken, Nickel said and Councilman Jerro, this is a two-year term only. So two years from now, you all aren't satisfied with the job that I'm doing or how I'm representing the city, you will have that opportunity to recast your votes. And, um, so it's a longstanding tradition. I've talked to past mayors, Lance, some of the people that you spoke to that are mentors of yours, that feel strongly that this tradition makes sense in El Segundo and having served a four-year term and having been involved in the Southern Cal Association of Governments, the Council of Governments, both in leadership positions there. I'm, I'm a regional council now for SCAG and I'm the second vice chair of COG. It does matter. Um, when Mayor Patrick Fury of Torrance or Mayor Jim Butts of Inglewood or the mayor of El Segundo are in a room, it matters. When you're a voted by your peer mayor as opposed to a rotating mayor, it has a different gravitas. Trust me, I've seen it firsthand. And the other thing I'll say is we're a little bit different of a city. We're, yeah, we're only five square miles. You all know this, but we have ninety thousand people during the day. We have an LA Air Force Base. Mayor Gordon was successful along with others to prevent LA Air Force Base from being on BRAC, on the BRAC list. We have LAX that we're constantly struggling with. We have Hyperion, we have power plants, we have the refinery. We're just a different city. And I, I believe strongly that a different city like ours requires a voted in mayor. So that's where I stand on that. Thank you for that. Um, so on the item that Carol brought forward, I don't believe there was consensus. The only one I was, it sounded like Councilman Pimentel, you wanted to trust the system and go with what we have and know that two years will have another opportunity to vote. Is that right?
Uh, yes, and I think we've seen in the past that, that councils have moved where needed if they think a change was warranted. Um, I, 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 I trust the courage and conviction of the people on the council to make those moves. So I, I would, while I, I, I agree thematically again, uh, with Councilman Purstuck, uh, I, I do not think that we should make a motion to put this in the administrative code.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, doesn't sound like we have consensus on that item. So we're gonna go on to the consent calendar. Okay, so this is gonna be a little bit challenging. I apologize in advance. Uh, okay. Again, if you'd like to pull an item or have, or talk, um, let's see. Does anyone want to pull anything? I'm looking for visual cue. No? Okay. Uh, let's see then. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
Nickel, so moved.
Thank you.
Pimentel's second.
Okay, all in favor? I'll ask everybody, I'll ask everybody. Okay, Councilman Nickel, you're an I. Councilman Jerro?
I'm.
And Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
I'm.
And we got Carol's and I'm an I as well. So it's five oh on that. Thank you. Okay. I believe Carol, I mean, Tracy, you're muted.
Um, sorry about that. Um, just so you know, I, I'm supposed to do the voice vote as your clerk, so.
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry, new procedure.
Okay, I'm muted as well, so it's okay.
Tracy, can you confirm that we're on staff presentations now? That's what I see on my sheet.
Correct.
Alright, so this one, item seven, authorizes city manager authority to waive all late penalties and interests associated with late payments of up to thirty days of the transient occupancy tax or TOT tax by hotels in the city of El Segundo during the period of March thirty-first, twenty twenty through July thirty-first, twenty twenty. Scott, Mr. Mittnick, who will report on the item?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, these three items, item number seven, eight and nine, these are, um, action items related to the COVID nineteen emergency situation. So before we get started with item seven, if, uh, it's okay with the council, I'd like to have Fire Chief Chris Donovan give an, um, update on where things are uh, currently in the city and what's going on out there. And then he'll set the stage for these three items. Thank you.
Anyone on council opposed to that suggestion? No, okay, good. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. First, uh, my apologies, my background is doesn't I have the seal that you have? I'll work on that on the go forward. Uh, you're looking at the back wall of my office, so my apologies there. Um, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time um going over an update of the coronavirus. And I'd like to start with the chronology from the federal, state, and local actions. I'll then go into an update on a disaster preparedness efforts here in El Segundo. And then I'll discuss some of those local efforts that in my opinion have been successful. And I'll conclude with any questions you might have. And, and let me start by saying that um, thirty one years in the fire service, I've had the opportunity to go and be involved with many, many emergencies. Small scale disasters to major conflagrations of uh brush fires uh that went on for weeks and months. And um, thi- this is one of those events that is asymmetrical in our approach for disaster preparedness. Um, it is testing our skills and abilities, no doubt. It's testing the resolve of our city and of our community. But it's also showing some incredible opportunity and incredible effort on the behalf of, of your city employees and of the community in which we serve. I, I can tell you, um, I'm um interacting on a daily basis with some of the finest public safety professionals. Uh, city hall employees uh in, engaging with uh local businesses and community members. And I'm very proud of our efforts and you should be as well. Uh, this community is unique because of its community spirit and our ability to. Rally around a, a large scale disaster like uh COVID nineteen. Far from out of the woods and we have a lot of work ahead of us. Uh, I, I can tell you unequivocally, I'm very proud of the efforts of, of everybody in our community that have worked hard. Uh, including this council. The council has been very supportive from the very beginning of our efforts in support of, of the requests that we've made upon you. Uh, to effectively uh respond and prepare this community uh for the likes of COVID nineteen. And I personally want to thank you for that support. So getting on with a little bit of the chronology, the novel uh coronavirus was first detected in Wuhan province of. The People's Republic of China in early December of two thousand nineteen. I can tell this council that uh beginning in mid February, um, our executive team began tracking and discussing the outbreak. Uh, we were early adopters to follow the trends and paying attention to what this uh unique virus was doing. Uh, uh, outside of our borders. And we were really watching to see um if and when it did cross into the United States, how quickly it would spread. January thirty first, the Secretary of Human, of Health and Human Services declared a public health emergency. And on March fourth, Governor Newsom made a declaration of an emergency. That same day, LA County proclaimed a local emergency. And the LA County Health Officer declared a local health emergency. This was a very powerful. Uh, step that the county of Los Angeles made as a public health officer. Uh, without a doubt is the most powerful person in the county of Los Angeles as it relates to our response to COVID nineteen. On March eleventh, the World Health Organization declared that it was global pandemic. And on March thirteenth, President Trump declared the existence of a national emergency. Locally, on March sixteenth, uh with the support of uh this council, El Segundo proclaimed a local state of emergency. And on that same day, we issued an administrative order requiring the closure of non-essential businesses. And we activated all, our all hazard instrument management team and the, and the emergency operations plan. The next day, March seventeenth, the council signed a resolution of local emergency. And following that, on March nineteenth, El Segundo, excuse me, the governor issued a safer at home order. Uh, this became a uh difficult process locally, uh but I will tell you unequivocally again, our community uh rose to the occasion and heeded the warnings. Of the governor. Uh, on March nineteenth, the LA County Health Department issued a safer at home order with specific guidelines on how we would manage. Our day to day operations here locally. And then on the nineteenth of March, El Segundo uh issued our administrative order to closing parks and facilities. On the twenty seventh of March, the LA County Health Department issued a temporary closure of beaches and trails. And on April first, LA County issued a home isolation um health officer order. That also included a health quarantine order for those that were testing positive for COVID nineteen. And then uh just the other day, on April tenth, LA County extended the safer at home order, which included some additional community mitigation efforts. Which I'll talk about in, in a while. So you can see the trend that was taking place that goes back to December of two thousand nineteen. And has substantially ramped up in our approach to dealing with the novel COVID uh virus. Um, wh- what's unique here in El Segundo is like any major disaster, the key efforts related to COVID nineteen. Involve preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. Those are the four cycles of any disaster preparedness effort. And as I mentioned, I'm very proud of our efforts that we've been very proactive, uh which has helped in those efforts. On the preparedness side of the house, thanks to city council support, we have a full time emergency manager. And I can tell you that Randy Collins is one of the best. He's bringing, bringing forth experience, expertise, which is helping us manage this emergency. We've also have an updated emergency operations plan. This plan was approved by this council. Uh, in support of all disasters inclusive, including a pandemic. And we've been able to modify and adjust. Um, that uh order to fit the pandemic responses uh locally as it relates to our city practices. And probably most important here is um, this, this council supported the all hazarded incident management team. One of only three in the entire county of Los Angeles. This all hazard incident management team brings uh staff from every department in the city of Los Angeles. These individuals are cross trained in disaster preparedness and emergency management. And have been working every day uh on a, on a um, a shift schedule, work a four ten shift schedule. Responding locally uh to this disaster and bringing forth effective um means to mitigate uh uh as needed. Uh, so those are preparedness efforts we've done. On the response side of the house, I, I'm really proud to um let the council know. That uh the fire department and police departments are fully staffed. We continue to be. Uh, equipped and outfitted to respond to all impacted. We have developed uh operational plans on both the police and fire departments that won't impact our ability to provide that exceptional service that our community demands. And, and we've been, we've been able to adjust and modify our practices. Uh, on calls, but also in the fire station and police stations and at city hall to maintain. Uh, safe distancing and, and proper hygiene for our firefighters I could speak to specifically, much like you do in your home. So um, from the response side of the house, um, your first responders are uh providing exceptional service. In addition to that, and probably equally important, behind the scenes, there's a myriad of people that have been stepping up and leaning into this disaster. Beats and Water Department, um, our wastewater division, our planning and building safety employees. Um, to the library staff that have been uh working diligently to provide library services to our community. Uh, to the recreation of parks employees uh that have been doing their very best to uh provide services to our community. And, and quite frankly, to the lowest um in the, the, probably the most important folks are custodial workers that have been. Showing up every day, helping to kee- uh clean and maintain and disinfect our workplaces. Uh, it's been a remarkable effort from that response. On the, every major emergency requires one very important uh process, and that's called documentation. And the all hazard incident management team, every day they put forward an incident action plan. We have all of our employees properly documenting the FEMA and CALS, uh CAL O E S forms. And we have a robust file of documentation that will prepare our city for reimbursement up to seventy five percent for a COVID nineteen response. And, and um, this will pay dividends when we put in our paperwork for reimbursement. And when the FEMA teams come back to our. Community and start piling through that documentation, uh we've done a superb job of preparing for uh the recovery efforts here. Finally, on the mitigation side, this is where we really need to thank our community. Um, we, we've challenged this community. We were proactive and leaning forward in terms of our actions of recommending closing restaurants and bars, and it was uncomfortable and difficult to do. Uh, but we got the support of those business owners. And this council, uh um, council member Perstek was instrumental in the Gundo to Go program, which really helped our local businesses. In the mitigation processes where we were, we were able to maintain safe distancing, but still support our local economies, which was important. In our, our community, they, they've really taken the heed of the orders of the safer at home. The uh LA County Public Health Department's uh health orders, which are very powerful orders. Uh, the city of El Segundo administrative orders and really common sense and common practices. And, and I, I applaud the community for their mitigation efforts. Um, city employees are following strict guidelines every day in compliance with the um. Community mitigation efforts and stopping the spread of the virus, but so is our community. And, and for that, I'm thankful. So those four phases of preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. Um, I can, I can probably report, we're, we're in a good, in a good place and, and prepared to continue to respond. Um, as it relates to our tracking of, of the COVID nineteen. Um, we've been monitoring the pandemic uh for, as I mentioned, for literally for, for months. And we've been taking, well, several uh, several weeks to a month and a half, um, uh, paying very close attention to that. And for the last several weeks, we've been um paying close attention to the University of Washington. Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation Model, the I H M E model. And you may see this in the news reported on a regular basis. Uh, this is a statistical model and a statistical analysis. Which is used on a, on a annual basis to track diseases across the world. And the team at the University of Washington have been able to quickly scale up the, the statistical analysis for the COVID nineteen. And what the model does is it predicts when um, when we anticipate to see an increase and an uptick in. People that test positive for the disease and the, and the potential negative ramifications of those that die from this. And then initial models uh did not take into consideration those very aggressive and assertive community mitigation efforts and social distancing. That have been taking place in, in California. But um pri- prior to that taking place, the models indicated that we'd reached the peak of, of infection. Um, on the April thirteenth. And April thirteenth was an important date to follow because from that date forward, the model predicts. That we'll see a decline. So we've reached the top of the curve and you hear about the flattening of the curve. That, that indeed seems to be the, the, the case, although it's very early to. Um, declare victory and spike the football. In fact, we are a long ways from that. This is gonna be. A very, very slow, long recovery, which I'll talk about in a moment. But it appears that the statistical model from the University of Washington is indicating that the things that we're doing locally. Um, in El Segundo, in the county of Los Angeles and through California are being ineffective. Uh, to give you a little bit of perspective, um, as of one o'clock today, we have reported eleven cases of, of uh COVID. Uh, here in El Segundo. Uh, that has remained a steady for the last uh three days. Um, in the Los Angeles County, uh there are uh now ten thousand and forty seven confirmed cases with three hundred and sixty deaths. There are twenty three thousand three hundred and thirty eight confirmed cases in California with seven hundred and fifty eight deaths. What's important to report is that there are now twenty two public health testing labs. And so the push to get more testing done will be important as the uh health officials are able to test and track. Uh, those that have been in contact with people that tested positive and do aggressive um quarantine and isolation to slow the spread. And then uh in the United States, there are now five hundred and seventy nine thousand five confirmed cases with twenty two thousand two hundred and fifty two deaths. These statistics are not provided to frighten you or frighten the community, but really to underscore the importance of community mitigation. And specifically, the safer of home, at home ordinance, the social distancing, the good hand washing. If uh, for those that uh were able to watch last Friday's community question and answer period, the theme of that was stay home. Stay safe, social isolate. If you go out in public, distance yourself at least, at least six feet. From individuals and practice good hand washing. Those community mitigation efforts are really paying off. They're really stopping and or slowing the spread and will ultimately. Uh, be the determining, determining factor as to how we ultimately combat the uh COVID nineteen. Um, as an update to community mitigation efforts, um, there was an updated county public health order that was put out on April tenth. And that county health order takes effect April fifteenth at eleven fifty fifty nine PM. This new social distancing mandate from the LA County Public Health Officer. Is now requiring the wearing of cloth face covering while performing duties that involve close contact with others. And close contact is defined as six feet or closer for ten minutes or more. The health order, um, interestingly, talks about. Uh, being able to continue to do outside activities, to go out and do um. Um. Uh, physical activities such as jogging and riding your bikes as either, either an individual or as a family. Um, but it does state that if you're gonna go outside to do essential business such as. Shopping at a grocery store or picking up food at a drive through or picking up at the go, Gundo to Go or other essential services. You need to be wearing a cloth face mask. And the rationale behind this is there's a lot of uh research and evidence now that shows. That there are people that have the coronavirus in their uh system, but they're asymptomatic. They're not showing symptoms of fever. Body ache, coughing, like you would see with a, a normal particular patients, if you'll uh, uh bear with the word patient. Uh, they're shedding the virus. And shedding means as they cough or sneeze or talk, specifically if they're talking with, with uh some. Um, uh, not anger necessarily, but with a lot of uh gusto, uh, a lot of spit and saliva comes off in that process. The wearing of the face mask, or excuse me, the face covering. Prevents the shedding of the virus from those asymptomatic patients. And so this is yet another community mitigation effort that will stop uh and slow the spread. Um, we can um talk more about the, the county public health order if you'd like um at the end of this. I do want to talk about uh an important um effort that I'm very, very proud of. And what makes El Segundo such a unique. Community is our care for uh those in need. And uh Park Vista is an, is a, an example of a facility. That I identified early on as being my number one target hazard in our response to the COVID nineteen. And we were really aggressive in our community mitigation efforts. We leaned into this very heavy in the, in the early dates, days of this um COVID nineteen. And we asked the ninety seven residents of uh Park Vista to shelter in place. And we uh shut down. The public uh areas of that facility. And we asked to limit the amount of people that were not necessary and essential from going into that facility. And we've been doing regular updated um shopper assistance programs for the members of uh Park Vista and actually for, for all members of our community that need assistance. Um, but particularly with the Park Vista, uh, uh, given ninety seven people in a, in apartment complex, if you will. The, the need to uh continue our proactive efforts is, is evident. And so. The city is close to finalizing a contract whereby we'll be bringing in healthcare professionals that will offer um. Uh, on a voluntary basis, will offer free health screening on a weekly basis. And so. We will provide again on a voluntary basis, a healthcare professional that can interact with the resident. Can do a health screening, can um check on their health and wellbeing. And if uh, if services are needed beyond that health screening, uh the healthcare worker can reach back either to the fire department for. A follow up care or, or other resources that we have. And the goal is that we would have a healthcare professional. Interact with every resident at least once a week. And we would document uh that interaction to make sure that we're providing the best possible care. To those ninety seven uh residents. And, and the service of the shopper assistance is also available to any member in our community that needs assistance. And, and I can't say enough how wonderful our volunteers have been in, in support of, of that effort. I'll, I'll close by saying that right now, uh, we're still following our approach that. Um, all El Segundo employees are essential employees. Um, they're all. um, all El Segundo employees are essential employees. Um, they're all leaning, uh, strongly into this event. Um, supporting, uh, the services provided to our community. Uh, we are in, in a great fight against COVID nineteen. Uh, we have plans and protocols in place. We're able to quickly adapt, uh, to changes that may come about on a daily, even hourly basis. Um, and, and we're ready to continue this effort. Um, I, I need to remind this community though, uh, that this fight is long, uh, uh, not going to be over anytime soon. Uh, if you can imagine a very slow, steady, uh, recovery phase is what we can anticipate. You can begin to potentially see some lifting of the social distancing in some changes to the health orders as it relates to, um, the social distancing efforts. Uh, but this is not going to be a light switch. We're not going to effectively one day turn a light switch on and go back to business as usual. We need to anticipate, um, a, a slow and gradual recovery phase. Uh, but whatever that looks like, uh, we, we are here, we're prepared and we're ready to continue our response. So I apologize for the length in this, uh, update and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Chief, that was really helpful. Thank you. I just want to, before I turn it over to council for questions, I want to commend you, especially as it relates to being really quick with Park Vista and protecting those residents. And you only have to look to the south, not too far to see what's happening in some of those facilities with, um, older folks. So congratulations on everything you and the police department are doing. Uh, council members, questions? I don't see any. I see Scott grabbing his device, though potentially Scott Mittnick, did you want to weigh in?
Oh, um. I was just, uh, some paperwork, but I'm sorry, but I'll, I'll, um, I'll pick it up after council member comments to do items seven, eight, nine.
I don't think there are any. Do I have any? I don't think so. I don't see any council members. Oh, Carol, Carol does.
I just want to thank you, Chief Donovan. Your, your leadership is, is amazing and your team is really doing a fabulous job. Um, you know, our, uh, we as a community have been, have been receiving up-to-date information in a very timely and concise manner that has made us, has empowered us and to do the right thing and to follow the guidelines as best as possible. I can tell you that I've received a lot of communication from other cities indicating that they rely upon El Segundo to provide the best information. And we are the go-to pe- place for information. So thank you, thank you to your team. Um, as a council, you know, you've made us look great and I just think, um, you've done an amazing job. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilmember Prustak. Uh, Councilman Nickel.
I just want to say thank you again and echo Carol's words. Uh, you're making all of us look really good and really wise. And the information that you guys put out on a daily basis is easily digestible. Um, you've listened to any suggestions that the policy board here has made. And, uh, you know, you and your team are super responsive, timely, and, uh, the community is very lucky to have you in place. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then it looks like that's it for council comments. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mittnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your indulgence in allowing the fire chief to give you the update. Uh, I'd re, I'd be remiss if I didn't call out, uh, a few people here. Um, first, the city council for your leadership, your vision, the fact that you approved the emergency operation plan just a few months, uh, prior to this incident. So that we had the system, uh, in place and ready to roll. Uh, we were looking, we were gearing up to do a, a test exercise. So we were, this is the ultimate test, if you will. Um, and council also, uh, just to reiterate a comment the fire chief made. Your support of the emergency services coordinator position a few years ago, as I understand it, it was, uh, somewhat of a challenge. Uh, wondering if we needed a full-time person to do that. So I hope this incident validates that decision. And I could tell you, having been through a variety of, uh, emergencies over the, the decades I've been in this business. Uh, this, this has served the city very well. You should be proud of, of the effort to date. And, and rest assured, we're stand ready to keep, keep going with this. I'd, I'd like to call out though, the fire chief, Chris Donovan, the police chief, Bill Wayland. Um, Randy Collins, the emergency services coordinator. Those three individuals are playing key roles. And right now our incident commander, uh, lieutenant Jeff, uh, Layman, um, is doing an outstanding job. And one last compliment, uh, all the men and women from all of the city departments that are giving so tirelessly, um, in some cases around the clock to step up and to help out with, with this emergency needs to be acknowledged. Okay, so, uh, going on to the, the three items, the first agenda item, item number seven. And this is a, um, a request that staff is passing on to city council. We're, we're recommending that you grant this. This comes from two general managers representing two different hotels in the community. Uh, as city council knows, uh, a variety of El Segundo businesses have been hit very hard by this pandemic. But perhaps no business illustrates the extent of this uh, impact than the hotels. Fifteen local hotels. Our hotels were very robust. They were very well. Not unusual to have local hotels with occupancy rates over ninety percent on a regular basis, recurring basis. Uh, their success is tied, uh, to a variety of factors, mainly, uh, LAX and the traffic coming in and out of that and, uh, local businesses. So they're down below ten percent. Some are down like in the one to three percent range. A few hotels have shuttered to wait out this pandemic. So requests that's come forward, not to waive the, the transient occupancy tax, twelve percent tax that, uh, the users of the hotels pay, but they're asking for, um, some temporary relief if they run a little bit late and they, they need, um, up to thirty additional days to make their payments. Their request is to waive the penalty and interest charges. And the finance director has reviewed this. The, the impact to us is minimal. This is more of a symbolic gesture. Uh, the details are in the, uh, staff report. This would go through, uh, July thirty-first with a rolling thirty-day, uh, extension. Uh, staff's available. I Joe Lilio is, uh, available if you have any questions. And thank you for the opportunity to present this.
Uh, Mr. Mittnick, I just have one quick question. I'll turn it over to council for questions. Are there any legal concerns about doing so? And if, how many hotels are likely to take us up on this? I know from a cash flow standpoint, based on our past conversations, it's really meaningless almost to the city. Um, because we've got some cash reserves and cash in the bank right now, not even touching our reserves. But I'm just wondering about any precedent or legal issues that this might present. So I'd love to hear the city attorney weigh in on this as well.
The purpose of this is not to provide operating capital to the hotels. As it's been explained to me, the point is that the hotels are either shuttered or low on admin staff. And so they need additional time to process, uh, the payments to the city. Just so we're all clear, hotels collect the, uh, tax from the, um, patrons of the hotel. It's not money actually paid by the hotel. It's paid by people that are staying at the hotel. The hotel hangs on to, or holds on to that money and trusts for the city and then transmits it to the city. And so this is just allowing them additional time up to thirty days to make that payment.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to turn it over to council comment. Yeah, Mr. Drew.
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions. Um, number one, was the first quarter payment made on time?
Uh, my understanding is yes, uh, Joe Lilio can answer. There might have been one or two. Joe, you want to, are you on this? Are you on now?
Yeah, yes, I'm on. Uh, good evening, mayor, uh, council members. So hotels remit monthly, not quarterly. Um, and I'll give you an example. So for the February, uh, TOT payments, uh, that they collected from patrons at the end of February, um, they totaled it all up and then that is remitted to the city by March, uh, thirty-first. And we received all but two hotels' payments on March thirty-first.
Are one of those hotels the ones that's asking for this extension?
Yes, correct.
Okay, well, here, here's what I'm getting at. Um, because the, as, as city attorney just mentioned, this money is not one of their line items for revenue. Um, this is a tax that is paid, held for the city. So my, I guess I take a, a little bit of issue with the fact that January, February, they didn't have this problem. This problem started really in March and now in April. So it would seem to me that while it's good to be good partners and, and especially different businesses at this time, we can't really compare the TOT situation with say the issues that our downtown businesses are going through. Um, so that money should be there. So if they're not paying it, I don't believe it's just simply an administrative issue. I think it's being used to keep the doors open, which I understand from a business standpoint, don't get me wrong. But I am concerned a little bit about the precedent that we would be, uh, setting if we allow this to go on very much longer.
Thank you, Councilman Drew. Anyone else want to comment? Else look for a, give me a verb, like a non-verbal hand raise would be great. I, I feel that I had some initial concerns, was a little skeptical about the idea as well. I know from my own business experience, however, that there are situations in which governmental agencies will allow deference of things like payroll taxes, which are also paid on the payroll, uh, on the, by the employees. Um, and there are not precedent at times. I'm not too concerned that this will become a precedent for our city. And, um, we are a business-friendly city first and foremost. And frankly, we haven't really done that much outside of what the state and the county has done for our businesses outside of the Gundo to Go program. Carol, that was amazing. Did a great job with that program. But in terms of relief, we actually have a member of our, one of our councils who reached out and another hotel, I mean, I heard from several hotels. It's, it's worse than Mr. Mittnick suggested. I mean, when he said one percent, two percent, that's one percent, two percent occupancy. So we're talking about ninety-eight percent, ninety percent down. LAX is down ninety-five percent. At, the airports across the country are down like ninety-three to ninety-four percent. So I would be in favor of giving them this, uh, break on, on just the penalties. It's really all we're talking about. They still have to pay by waiving the penalties. Um, that's where I stand. And, and I'll turn it over to council member Prustak or Pimentel or Nickel. Do you want to comment?
Yeah, and they were only asking for a two-week deference, correct? It wasn't, they were asking for a long period. It was just a two-week deference. If I can remember correctly.
Correct. One of the hotels that reached out, um, to the city was asking for a two-week deference. But what's, uh, proposed before you is a thirty-day deference.
And if I could interject, um, we, that was in line with, um, some other cities that we saw they were doing thirty days. It was just, it was easier administratively for us to track thirty days versus two weeks. We can revise it to two weeks if that's what the council wishes.
I mean, I, I, can I take a devil's advocate position, which is again, I, I alluded to this a little bit. I don't think we're doing enough, frankly. Uh, these are, every business owner and entrepreneur that I know and associate with, and Lance, you can attest to this, is put a halt on all vendor payments to the degree that they can. They have almost all applied for PPP programs. Everybody's looking for help. And when Ga- Gavin Newsom said, you know, there's a moratorium on being evicted. Most businesses, I don't know what the numbers are, but many businesses and many regular, um, tenants took, took landlords up on that. And again, we are a business-friendly city. I think we could do more. I think we could actually potentially give people a break for a period of time on TOTs after like if Mr. Lilio came back and said this has no impact or an immaterial impact on our cash flow and the income of the city. I would recommend that we give these people a break for a longer period of time. If it's not going to have an immaterial effect on the finances of our city, I would suggest we do more during these times. Because I can tell you as a business owner, uh, that's writing payroll checks, these are incredibly difficult times. And so I would argue if we can afford it and it won't affect our cash flow and it won't affect our income in a material way. And I see, I see Mr. Hansel getting nervous already with the hand raise. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Uh, yeah, um, again, the city Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The city, um, cannot legally lend money or its credit to, uh, private enterprise. And so, uh, when this was discussed with staff, um, it was, uh, made clear that this money can't be used for operating expenses. That the reason for this was to give them, uh, additional time because they may be having administrative problems. It is not for purposes of giving them money for cash flow. Um, that's prohibited by the constitution. The state and the federal government have rights that, um, cities don't have. And some charter cities have the right to do what you're, um, explaining there. But, um, the city of El Segundo is not a charter city and, and with the funds that have been collected, that is not an option for the city. Now, if the council wanted to reduce the, um, and temporarily suspend a part of or all of the TOT through a formal action, suspend the, the tax itself, you do have the authority to do that. Now, that's not on the agenda tonight, but we could, we could bring that back for discussion.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Hansel. So that idea, oh, Councilman Nickel, go ahead. You're muted, Scott. Scott, you're muted. Start over, bud.
I'm muted. Here we go. Uh, Mark. Is it, but it's not illegal for us to waive the late penalties that we would charge, correct?
Correct. Again, this is being done for, as I understand it, to give them some additional administrative time.
Yeah, so what I would propose, uh, I'm echoing a bit of what the mayor is saying in regards to a longer timeline. But I think we take it thirty days at a time. So I am happy to, uh, support this motion to, uh, not charge a late penalty for up to thirty days. If some of our local businesses come to us and are still in hardship or unable to pay, then that should be revisited again. You know, we don't get a report as to where the money's being held, what it's being used for. Uh, coming from a position of a small business that I always thought it was odd that we would, as a restaurant owner, we would do the job for the state and collect the sales tax. And then we would give it to the state. So we were their tax collector and yet we never touched that. It wasn't ours. We were the passers, so we were working for the state. So these hotels are working for us. They're collecting this money for us. They're accounting for this money for us and then giving it to us. So from that aspect, I see them as our partners and I would like to do anything I can to support them within the law.
Drew, I think Chris Pimentel wanted to say something.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thanks, Tracy.
No, I, I would, I would concur a bit. We have, because we have a declared emergency, uh, I think that that gives us grounds to make some allowance here. Uh, I, I think that, that I'm a bit more sympathetic to council member Jeru's point that this money, in theory, uh, should not be being diverted as a, as an operating expense. I, and I think that I'm sensitive to the fact that a number of businesses around here and in the region and in the country, the first people they've cut back on are the accounts payable and the accounts receivable and the people who would crunch these numbers and send these things out. So the idea that we are giving a bit of leeway until those people are fleeted back in and can process this, waiving any sort of penalties, I'm very comfortable with just because I see it out there. The AP, NAR people in, in company staffs are just not working right now. Uh, and it's very difficult to get what are sort of these elementary, um, and, and basic business processes done. So, uh, I am, I would be, I would take a really hard look at some sort of, of broad forgiveness program. Uh, I, I, I don't think we're, I would be in favor of that. But this idea of not penalizing people for not being able to process these things while their administrators are out of work or being furloughed, uh, I'm totally comfortable with. So I would, I would be in favor of this motion.
It sounds like we had a, well, I'll move approval of the item as it's written. And I think Councilman Nickel, you are a second, right? Any further discussion? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you call for the vote, please?
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Jeru?
Aye.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel?
Aye.
Councilmember Prustak?
Aye.
Mayor Boils?
Aye.
Pass with five oh.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mittnick, we, uh, we're done with that one? Right?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council will move on to item eight. Uh, and this, this is a, um,
Would you like me to read the title, Scott? I think we should read the title for everyone that's watching.
Sure.
Okay, ratify actions taken by the Director of Emergency Services during the COVID nineteen local emergency, including but, but not limited to. Administrative Order Number Two relating the closure of city parks. Item two, in agreement with Everbridge Incorporated. Item three, in agreement with Utility Response Training Associates LLC, DVA, unified response training associates. And item four, the purchase of computers, in parentheses, laptops and software accessories with JW Systems. Okay, Mr. Mittnick.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is uh, really a, a, a housekeeping series of housekeeping items related to the emergency situation. Um, council will recall, as the fire chief talked about, on March seventeenth, you adopted a resolution confirming the existence of a local emergency. And since that time, we've had to take a, a variety of actions to implement the emergency without being able to be in front of City Council. So at this time, we're seeking your retroactive approval of the actions taken. And uh, for those at home, these I, this staff report's closed from pages uh, forty-six to sixty-one. So the first item is Administrative Order Number Two, which was issued by the, the city manager on uh, March nineteenth. And that was to close city facilities and parks, fields, sports courts, exercise equipment, um, and maintain social distancing. That was to comply with the state order as well as LA County Public Health Department's um, orders. So we need your uh, uh, retroactive approval of that. And, and for the viewing public, staff did make City Council aware of these items before they hap- happened, happened. Uh, the second item, pages fifty to fifty-four in your report, this took place on March twenty-fourth, where the city manager, as the Emergency Services Director, uh, executed an agreement with um, uh, where did that go? With uh, Everbridge. So we heard some compliments and comments about our ability to communicate with the public through messaging and that type of thing. And during this, this meeting, there was at least one message that went out to subscribers. That's working very seam- seamlessly through the South Bay Alert System. Well, that's a contract we have with a company called Everbridge Incorporated. And the, the cost of that will be upwards of forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So we need retroactive approval for that. The third item, which was also done on March twenty-fourth, again, another component of the emergency situation, was a contract the city entered into with Utility Response Training Associates. This was the firm and they've been uh, providing assistance to us as part, part of our emergency management uh, system and preparation efforts. Uh, they ha- they helped us with the communication plan, um, and a, a variety of um, of services, of management consultant services. The fourth, and that cost is upwards of forty-seven thousand six hundred. The fourth item, and this was entered into on March twentieth, is with JW Systems. Um, and this was to acquire uh, laptops and supportive um, software. I believe we purchased up to sixty laptops so we could have employees work off-site uh, from their home in other locations. And uh, council was made uh, aware of that. And the cost for that is uh, up to a hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars. By the way, all of these items, which if we spend all the way to the max, has a total cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars. And that is being fronted by the general fund. Uh, with the next item on the agenda, uh, we're, we're going to set in place uh, the, the process to allow us to seek reimbursement from the federal and state governments. So in the past, for this type of uh, national or state emergency, we would get seventy-five percent reimbursement. We've put the wording in here up to seventy-five percent. Since this is a nationwide emergency facing literally every state, every city, every county, every special district in America, uh, we, we, it'd be hard to say for certain we're going to get seventy-five percent reimbursement, but we will get some reimbursement uh, up to that amount. So staff uh, from the fire department, they're available, and IT to um, uh, the information services department, if you have any specific questions about these actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. I know I have a question, but I'll defer to others. Any other council members would like to ask a question on these items, or on this item? My, okay, mine relates to the, the hardware and software that we're purchasing, Mr. Mitnick. I'm hoping that we'll find a way to use that beyond just the emergency, despite even the FEMA potential reimbursement. What are our plans for the equipment itself after this crisis is?
Sure, I'll have if um, Charles is, is available, he can, um, the answer is yes. And I'll have our information systems director provide the details. I know he's out there.
He, he's here. I am here. Uh, with respect to the equipment, what our plan is for, if I understood the question correctly, what we plan to do with the equipment after this emergency, we will continue to use the equipment as loners. And for the foreseeable future, it appears that people will be working from home. So we will also allow them to continue to use uh, that equipment uh, for remote connectivity. Many of the laptops that we had in stock were, were pretty old, so this also helped us
Can you go for one, too?
Our, our stock.
Okay.
I, I don't know, Mayor, if that answered your questions or if you're
Yeah, it did, it did. Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Appreciate it.
I, I have a, I have a question. So Charles, as a policy going forward then, you know, to ensure that we don't have to um, have duplicate uh, saw hardware for a employee, are we going to initiate that we bring in um, or that, have them have a laptop instead of a desktop? Like what is, like are we going to change our policy going forward so that we can ensure we can have the ability to transition without this added cost?
Um, that is not the plan. Um, what we use for desktops are the virtual desktops and they are substantially uh, uh, more inexpensive or less, less expensive than the actual laptop. So I can get the virtuals for about two or three hundred bucks. So the people that work here at the facility that aren't as mobile, I would plan to allow them to continue to use the virtuals. We do have a number of employees that are either mobile and/or work from home. Um, so we would uh, quite potentially allow, let them keep those laptops so in the event that they need to work from home. In addition to that, we, as I said before, we have a number of people that are mobile. Um, and in addition to that, we'll use uh, probably the balance to replenish our loner stock. Um, as we typically keep about twenty-five to thirty loner laptops and they stay pretty busy. So to answer the question, um, in short, we keep about twenty to thirty in loners and then we would look at about twenty to thirty people that either work remote or may need to, or may need to have the ability to work remote and then potentially even pass some of those off to some of the, the uh, IMT workers on a permanent basis.
And then my, my second question is, I know initially there was some concern about security and um, accessing our uh, info, our, our uh, servers remotely. How were you able to accommodate and, and ensure that that, the security was secure? We, we were, everybody was safely logging into our
Yeah, that, that's the beauty, uh, beauty of our virtual laptops, I'm sorry, our virtual desktops. So when people actually dial in, they're still only dialing in or they're only remote, remoting into their desktop. So all of the software um, that we use here internally and we're currently using, we just put in place some new cybersecurity software. Um, we also put that same cybersecurity software in place for every single one of those laptops. That's one of the reasons that the, the price of those laptops went up because we had to uh, make sure that we had office on there, all of the cybersecurity things of that nature. So those laptops are secure. We have dual, dual factor, two-factor authentication for each of those laptops. So I believe there are, they are as secure as the desktops that we use here in the office.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Purstuck. Any other questions for Mr. Mallory? Okay, state in your last name, would someone like to make a motion to approve the item?
Giroux motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second. And then Madam Clerk, would you please call for the vote? I don't think there's any other discussion, so then, no, okay.
Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Boiles?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Passed by a five oh voice vote.
Thank you. Item nine, adopt the designation of applicant's agent resolution as required by the Governor's Office of Emergency Services to be eligible for federal or state financial assistance with the COVID-nineteen emergency. Mr. Mitnick, who will report on this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, I think that description, the agenda description speaks for itself and having that, this is what's necessary to be eligible for reimbursement. Uh, having said that, myself and our Emergency Services Coordinator, Randy Collins, are, are available for questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Councilmember Giroux?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. Um, I, I mean, it's kind of a dumb question. I'm assuming that you understand what the process is for applying for these funds. And are we applying for every potential option? And my, my second question on that, because it kind of relates, is that considering our general fund is made up ninety-eight percent, you know, uh, from business revenues, is this type of thing taken in consideration when they start to dole out who gets what and when? Um, we have a distinct disadvantage against some other cities who might be up for the same funds.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, from respect to the national and state governments, they don't take into consideration, uh, Randy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the make uh, or the, uh, where the dollar, where the tax revenues come from. They look at how much money you spent, was it spent on eligible expenses? Did we meet the requirements? Did we fill out the paperwork correctly? Um, dealing with disasters is an administrative headache on steroids, but we know how to do it. We're ahead of the curve. Uh, just about every one of your disaster services workers knows how to do this, how to document. It's documentation, documentation, documentation. So to answer the question, uh, Randy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, i- it doesn't matter where the tax revenues come from. What matters is the type of expenses and how we documented them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Someone like to move approval?
I moved.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, thanks. So first by uh, Councilmember Purstuck and then me second.
Uh, you, sorry.
Sounds good.
All right, uh, so for the vote, Councilmember Giroux?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Purstuck?
Yes.
Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
Okay, passes by a five oh voice vote.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, reports, City Treasurer, Mr. Robinson, anything to report this evening?
Said to get off me, sorry. Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you again, welcome. And let's see, Councilmember Giroux?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Just a warm welcome and congratulations.
Sorry, I was reading the script. Mayor Protem, I'll get it right.
Okay, that's all right. Just welcoming the new treasurer, welcoming uh, Lance, and congratulations to all for your reelections.
Thanks, sir. All right, Councilmember Nickel?
I will echo that. Congratulations, Mr. Giroux. Congratulations, Mr. Robinson. And uh, Drew and Carol, I look forward to working together with you for another two years. And uh, I think we have a wonderful group that's here.
I absolutely concur. Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Okay, uh, Councilmember Purstuck?
Yeah, just want to thank the citizens again for re-electing me and I just want to congratulate Matthew and Drew and um, Drew on your mayorship and Chris on your mayor pro tem. We have a great team and I see that, I, I envision that we're going to do an amazing job for the city of El Segundo.
Thank you, Councilmember Purstuck. I'll, um, got a couple of things. One is, it occurred to me uh, that as we resurface out of this and we're getting varying reports from the federal government, state, county, in terms of when that might happen, whenever it does, I think that we should start preparing now as a truly business-friendly city, which we've been saying for years. So if there's anything that we can do that's going to give us a distinct competitive advantage when we start coming out of this, that's going to give us press, it's going to give us momentum with our business community. I know we're doing a ton, I see what the PIO team is doing in terms of putting out the business or resources, information. Great communications there with thirty percent plus engagement on the open rates for the emails. I know what the chamber is doing. Marcia and Linda have been doing a great job. They're doing an SBA seminar or, or have recently. I would like us to figure out as a council and as a staff, what we can do that won't cost taxpayer dollars, anything, or at least not in the immediate future, that will give us that competitive advantage. So it's just something to think about. And I would like to thank Barbara Voss, Lieutenant Aaron Kirkens, Randy Collins, uh, Kristen Miller, who came in from Milwaukee, Randy had worked with her before, um, Kristen Burgman, Christina Rivas, Darnell, Robert, Stevie Ryan, who have been getting together every day and crafting the messages that we are putting out to the community. And they've done an incredible job and we're getting lots of feedback about how this council is keeping the uh, the city informed. And that's all being led by staff, so thank you very much there. And then Charles Mallory and Scott Kim, I know you two have been scrambling in your whole IT department to mobilize working from home, pretty much overnight. So thank you for all your efforts there. And I want to congratulate as well Lance, Carol, Matt and Tracy. And Tracy, like I said, and I'm, most votes, most, might, might be the most, I don't know, most votes in a long time, anyway. So congratulations there. And one, one other quick thing. Mona and Patricia and Lily and Tracy, everybody in your department has done an incredible job. The LA vote process worked really well. I heard, I heard way more compliments about how great of a job that you did in conjunction with the county, how much easier it was with multiple days of voting, the multiple polling places, didn't matter where you voted. Just incredibly well done. I know you've been working really hard to align with the new county, so thank you for all your efforts there. And then final thing I want to say is, it, you might not have noticed because it hasn't been mentioned a lot, but we just got word from LA County effective yesterday that there is zero patients, to use Chief Donovan's term, but zero people at Doc Wyler. And I don't know if that's changed since yesterday, but the, the video that I put out this morning emphasized, and yesterday actually, that there were zero people there. And I don't have all the context or background as to why that is. I have to believe some of it relates to a lot of the questions and concerns that we voiced to the LA County supervisors. I take that as good news and it's also, I think, a good sign of LA County's efforts in terms of hindering the spread of COVID-nineteen. Uh, all right, that's all I have. City Attorney?
Nothing this evening. Congratulations to all of you.
Thanks, sir. City Manager?
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, congratulations to all of you who were re-elected. And the new council member, we look forward to working uh, with you. It's nice to have five, to have a odd number. It's very important when we have agenda items to have an odd number. Uh, and uh, we look forward to working with the full council. I'd also like to uh, point out appreciation and compliments to the city clerk, um, Tracy Weaver for your, your um, extra effort for the script for to, tonight's uh, council meeting. That was a, a lot of work and it made the process clear and understandable for, for everybody. So thank you for, for that effort. Uh, the uh, the next um, council meeting will be next Tuesday on the twenty-first. A relatively light agenda, but following the mayor, uh, the mayor's comments and suggestion to be business-friendly and to be well-positioned to, to move forward. Uh, if, if all goes well, we, we do hope to have the downtown um, uh, development RFQ, request for qualifications item uh, in front of the City Council. If not, by April twenty-first, that would be by May fifth. Also on, um, that would be probably the, the larger item on the twenty-first. At this time, we will have some close, or consent calendar items. Then on May fifth, we'll have the mid-year, either May fifth or May nineteenth, I believe, we'll have the um, uh, six-month mid-year fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty budget report to City Council. So we're in the month of April, we're in the seventh month of our fiscal year, so we're more than halfway through uh, the year. That's it, uh, council. Um, thank you for a good meeting and we're, we'll move into a closed session, I believe.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna move into closed, but we are going to take a recess. Since we open these meetings concurrently, it's uh, six forty-seven. Let's reconvene at seven PM. And I believe we're using the city attorney's uh, Zoom link that everybody
That's correct, and um, you should check your messages as there is a password.
Great, okay.
So we're closing your open session, but we're continuing to your close. So if you will just uh, once again, let me know when you're ready to go, when you're, when you finish, please.
Will do, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.